So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 3:02 PM. And I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk. You are recording this?
I wasn't, but I am.
Do you want to?
I didn't want to.
Well, I'll say it's being recorded by the recording clerk for record-keeping. And by Selectman Gant. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting? Any none? Thank you. Attendance Sheep? So I think you're the only one who signed in.
I did sign in.
We know we were. Thank you, and we get no one else has shown up. So we have a few things today. The main business pieces are website update, front-page design, and basic content organization, information technology, security, and goals and objectives. So with that said, I'd like to start with the website, front-page design. And Sue, do you want to hand it to?
Well, I think, Robyn, if you go to the lead on this, I mean, I'm happy to bring you up today, what we've been doing.
Well, Sue's been our point person on this. And we met with Mark several weeks ago, and have gone over this with him. And he liked what we were doing, which is sort of narrowing down all the options up there so people didn't have to think too much. And so this is, and then we met subsequent to that, and we hit up a little bit more. And so what Sue has passed around to you is our proposed front page. Do we have a draft second page? Yeah.
No, this is what it used to be, this is what it is now. Just if you wanted to see what it's looking for.
But we want to really focus on people being able to go to what they needed. So some...
This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
In a sense, point out the differences between what changed, in other words. Maybe it should be obvious, but in summary, the picture got smaller.
Okay. Do you want me to go over then?
Yeah.
So the top row, we'll go from top to bottom. On the top left, we got rid of the "how do I", and put it over to the far right where you see "where do I go for"? And then moving down on the left, we changed that light spot. And we, well, I guess more, we got rid of the maroon buttons on either right and left side, made the picture smaller, and that leaving more space on the left-hand side to put services as an area of looking for documents, and documents for looking for items or whatever. And on the right-hand side, what that did was leave us more room for news items that you can go down and put a lot more on there. And also, we changed the calendar. There's four spots, and it was very confusing when people would say, "Is it a senior? Is it a public college? Is it an event?" So we're combining all three of those together to be under a tab called Events, and then Meetings. So as you see on your markup, it's only going to be Meetings and Events. And under Events, it will show where that event is, opposed to now trying to figure out, is it a senior event? Is it a public college event? Is it a whatever? We figured that was easier. In addition, we, removing maroon buttons. They are situated in other places, as you will see, under Services or Documents on the left-hand side. We've included a flag status on the left. And on the right, it's to sign up, putting emergency notifications, which is all there, it's just reconfigured and less busier. The other thing is that if there is an emergency that is occurring in the town, such as the cooling stations that came up automatically very quickly, there will be underneath the "sign up for 911", that it will appear right there that there is a...
An emergency alert.
Emergency alert.
Was there any kind of a flash tool or anything to draw an eye directly to it if it is emergency?
We can ask if they can do a flash. I am not sure if they can do a flash, but it will definitely come up with a big box with emergency notification and the language similar to what Ipswich has that Robyn had pointed out to us.
And just, see, because it'll be temporary.
Yeah.
I think it's worth doing that. And for instance, if we have an EE or West Coast notice, things like that, when a status changes, bang, it goes there.
We don't have a banner capability up here, is that it?
We do, no, we do not. That is static.
So what we tried to do with Services is there were so many buttons there and so many options, or there are so many things there. What we wanted to do was say, what do people want? They want services, or they want documents mostly?
And do we know that from some statistics stuff like searching or something like that that we've looked at?
No. We do know, I think through practice, what people look at.
Anecdotally.
A sense of it, not a particular.
Like paying bills or our donations. So we put pay bill and donate at the top. Sue has informed us that we get a lot, a lot, a lot of questions about trash in the sideline.
Yes, that...
So that's right up near the top.
That's good.
I know these are statistics on that one.
Hours of operation, I think people always...
Yeah, that's good.
Watch cable video on demand. See, that was put around here somewhere.
It's here, Talk with Cable, and it's Talk with YouTube, which was really confusing for somebody to know. And I would like to say we just put action words here to say that there's an action that you're looking for.
Yeah. I love that.
Website updates, you can enroll. I think we'd like to, people to think about that as they're looking for these things. Employment opportunities, we're also going to post on employment there. And volunteer opportunities. We decided to separate those two out.
I have a question on this. I gather that if you click on the Government tab, you go in deeper and see some of these other things. I'm wondering if we could put one more in the blue bar at the top on the left-hand side at Home, which will bring you to this page. It's the landing page that people get to when they get to the website. And wherever you are inside the website, you could click Home and it comes right to this.
I think we can do that.
So currently, we have a little house in the upper right.
So you have a little house.
You can see that little house.
Where is it?
Okay, it sits right here next to it.
Oh, sorry.
It disappeared?
It just got cut off.
It disappeared in this copy?
That's what I mean. Yeah, I don't see it.
It's here, it's here.
Sure. And that's a standard icon that people are getting used to.
Oh, here, Dick, I printed out some more. This is the same.
It always used to be there. Now I know it's there back.
Okay.
This is like the edge, and then the home is over there.
I mean, I think putting Home there, if it's not a challenge, would be a, I agree, don't take the house away. Dick's right, I think people are getting used to that, but not everybody is. And the other thing is when you click on one of those blue buttons at the top there, and you go someplace else, it's kind of nice to know you can get back to where you were.
So the other thing we looked at are documents, because as you know, we get a lot of requests for information. And we're trying to get people to sort of search themselves. And so we have a Documents area where you can go to Documents and Reports, that we're going to be putting those reports in. Now, that needs to be organized a little bit, but I'm thinking like town reports, studies. You know, there are a lot of studies have done. We need to start archiving those and making them easily accessible here. View property maps in GIS and public records requests so people can actually just click and ask for a record. Now, when we go to Public Records requests, we're going to have a list of commonly requested records. So they don't have to think about them, they can just see what's there.
Clicking it's there.
Is that what this is?
No.
No.
No, this is under Government. This will take you right to commonly requested requests, Public Record Requests, commonly requested. And we're putting the Public Records Law on that page, too.
Yes.
So we'll list things that people commonly request, and they can just go there.
But they can also make a request for something else. It may or may not exist, but they can make the official request.
Yeah. But what we found was this was so cluttered. It looks good, but in practice, it was kind of cluttered. So kind of taking a page. Now, let me just say, I went through this process in Ipswich, and it took us months to launch it, months. And we had a group that met regularly about it. So remember, this is a process. I think, if I'm mistaken, tell me if I'm mistaken, but when you go to Government here, what you see is what we migrated over from the other website? Was that the case?
It was essentially migrated from the most, yes.
Okay, so it wasn't really a fresh start on that. And so you have to sort through everything here to find it. And you have to kind of know who's in charge and has phone numbers. And what people really want to do is just click on departments. So this is what we're looking at. This is the Government page, which will start at the top about Topsfield history, courts and committees.
So, Robyn, how do I get to it if I hit Government over here on the blue bar? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, yes.
Yes? If I hit that, then that will come up? That's the form, okay. Okay.
So this, everything about...
It'll show like this.
Right.
So this is the, this is sort of an example of what it would look like after you hit Government on the Ipswich page. You get a dial-up that says, more simply, in ours, you have to go to land use and then find planning, or know that planning's under land use.
Yeah, that's part of it. You don't want people to have to guess where things are.
So this has it all just right in front of you.
And then these will take you to the contacts and the pages as we use, as the town moves through this process. But we're going to have a Board of Selectmen's page. And on there, we're going to put your policies and regulations, licenses and permits, and boards and committees that you appoint. And that's where board documents will reside.
That will also be linked to if they go on the homepage to...
Meeting Minutes.
Meeting Minutes and Agenda. So basically, it's a different link for people who are... I think that's so important, different...
Yeah, so you can go in and back, you know, and that...
It's a common document that can be accessed by different means.
That's exactly right.
It's so important, it's so important.
Also, we've got a link here to town bylaws and zoning bylaws. Just so you know, Beth is, I've assigned to her finishing up the codification process because, and to update that. I figured out where we are on it, and so we're going forward to finish it. But there'll be a link to the town bylaws. Right now, there is a link, but it's, the bylaws aren't complete and there's some errors in there. Is that a large project, Robyn? It is, she's going to have to figure it out. But it just got dropped five years ago, and we're going to add some things into it. So again, you know, we have state and federal information, and directions, maps, hours. It'll look pretty much like the Ipswich page, but formulated around Topsfield. And you'll see in here, we have human resources and employment. So we'll put our personnel policies. I'm asking the board to look at a workplace violence policy. What's the Internet for?
Internet policy.
Is that the Internet policy?
Yes.
Use.
Yep.
Job descriptions, collective bargaining agreements, forms, new employee forms and benefits. And this, we've talked to the schools about because they'll be able to access these as well. We're revising the policies. And we want to make access, we want the employees to use this as well, to get access to the forms they need. Make it a little bit more serviceable. So this is what we're proposing. And then we'll go on to, you know, the third, fourth layers in. But I think these are good starts, just to get organized.
Robyn, right now, these forms, they can access them and print them out and then fill them by hand. I know there's a forms component in Laserfeet down the road, so that they actually...
I think that'll have to be looked at down there.
Where they can fill that online, so.
Yeah. We're just... This is going to be an ongoing process.
Let's walk first.
Yeah. But I think it's helpful just to kind of organize it in a way that people aren't overwhelmed in having to search too much to find what they're looking for. So we're just kind of letting you know what we're doing.
That's great. One question back to the meeting page. Town, department, hours of operations. Do we have different hours of operation by department?
Yes.
We do. Okay, so when you go in, they can see when each department is open?
As an example, the building department is open from seven to one. Normal business hours for most offices in Town Hall are eight to four.
The DPW may have different...
They have seven to three, so.
And we'll have contacts there, too, for that. So anyway, this is where we are now. And we, you know, as I said, we met with Mark and went through it, tried to remove any redundancies or anything. Tried to say, well, if you're just the average citizen, looking for something.
I like it. I also like the check current flag status.
That's really important to me. People love that, that check current flag status down here.
So why is it half-mas or not?
You just click on it, and it takes you to the state site, and it tells you what, whether the flag is full or half-staff, and why it's half-staff.
So for instance, when the week Mark passed away, the flags outside were at half-mast. And I was surprised because the one on Town Hall wasn't, and I hadn't heard anything about anybody asking for that. And then, thanks, Robyn, we went on. We looked at Ipswich State, I think it was. Or we went to the, one story short, it said, "The government ordered in respect for the victims of the mass shootings."
The veterans love this. And people that have flags and know what they're dealing with.
It's kind of nice.
It is, really nice and clean. I like what you guys did.
Thank you.
Really easy to navigate.
Just for naming point of view, it's Government that gets us to this page. So in concept, Government is this. Can we come up with a different name for what this column is? In other words, the column is the same as the... Okay, just think about it. You don't have to do anything now.
So the Government that I put, I just did this. We haven't really reviewed it as far as the, just to make this purified. This is not purified yet.
Got you, okay, the concept.
This is the concept, right.
We talked about, we're trying to point everything about Government here.
Yeah, good.
I'm sorry, Kate, go ahead.
We talked about emergencies and trying to put something in its place. Can we override the pictures to put in an emergency?
No.
Tornado coming.
So what we could do, I have the ability to change the pictures. So maybe if we did something and I took a screenshot of it and uploaded it as a photo, perhaps we could do something like that.
If we had something from...
That's why I think the flashing, if it's really critical, I think would call as much attention.
We've left pretty good blank space down here, and this is where it will show up.
Yeah.
But importantly today, it's where it shows up on the mobile phone. And the picture is on the mobile phone, right?
It's a good question how it'll look on a mobile phone.
But the important thing is going to be that people enroll to get these. You can enroll and get them by text.
No, I'm wrong. That picture does not appear. Maybe it does.
Oh, that is, yes, that is, that is.
And that is the place, ideally. Maybe we can't do it. But ideally, that's the place. Because if somebody has an emergency they're trying to figure out, they'll go to their laptop, whatever. But 90% of them are going to go to this instead of the laptop.
Well, I also think...
And if that picture kind of gives the grab, it would be good, I think.
We have to encourage people to sign up. Because if there is an emergency, if you're signed up for it, then you can get it by text, by email, or by phone.
With a lot more information than just whatever is static right there at the moment? There could be updates on a roll-on basis if one of you calls.
I mean, this takes a bigger effort because you're signed up for landlines. But if you're like me and you don't have a landline, you don't get calls.
So why have the signed up for landlines?
Everybody should go in and sign up for 911 emergency communications. Because if you do, you'll get the notices.
Can you sign up with your mobile on that?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, part of it is training people that if you go to the website, you can get it here. But honestly, for true emergencies, like here, we can put... And I rely, actually, let me be frank, I rely on the police and the fire to put the notifications out to the rec, which will come to us. But if you want to receive emergency notifications, then from the rec, then you need to sign up through here.
Do we know what kind of participation we have in the town?
Gee, I don't know.
Kind of sign up.
It's really do a big information component to...
We can make a point of it and so on. It's technically a reverse 911, but I don't think reverse 911 is something people understand.
No, no. But anything that we post here, or anything that comes out from the rec, you'll get the notifications here.
Yep.
So I think it's really incumbent on us. And maybe that's an announcement you can make at a meeting to say, as we go into the hurricane season and the winter season, we're encouraging everybody to please sign up on the website for emergency notifications.
Probably do an article, too.
I think we need to be...
I don't know how many people come to our website to see that.
For, in the first place. And whether you go to the website or not, the idea of having this ability to get messages. So there was a lot of talk about this some years ago. We need to know, we need to be convinced that the RACC really has this and really wants to do this, and that it's robust enough to handle the kinds of things that we want before we dive into something, and then people start asking questions and we don't have answers. Let's just give you one of the, just an example of the sort of thing we'd like to understand and how we might try to lay it out. If, we should have the ability to geographically send the message out, such as there is a water emergency.
Yes.
Water emergency, you've got to boil water. Well, there's no point in sending that water emergency to boil water to the people who have wells because they may have the worst problem or a less problem, but it's not the boiled water that's coming out of a water department plant. So that's like a layer that they want to have at the RACC that we can work with very quickly. Or that you can do it either by section of our streets or something like that, when there's flooding, et cetera. This is one of the most important things that we can and should be doing. I'm delighted that we're talking about it. But when we do it, I think it needs to be done very carefully and right so that we don't teach somebody something, and six months later, reteach them something different, teach them something different.
Dick, can I suggest, this is important enough. This, to me, speaks more to the functionality than the layout, which is the conversation today. But I think that it does deserve a little bit of looking into what would be the best way to do that, so.
What's that?
Just the functionality for things like emergency notification, rather than take our time in this meeting, trying to solve that problem. I just ask that you sort of think about it. Maybe other towns you could look at and see how they do it. But given the fact we have the rec, it's a slightly different situation. We do want to be sure it's clear. But I prefer to not focus on that at this meeting.
I do get the RACC weather alerts. Why am I getting the RACC weather alerts? Because I signed up? I've signed up from time to time. Okay, so I am signed up for this. Okay. So...
Is there any thing that you've heard, Dick, that makes you think that they wouldn't be able to handle if everyone in town signed up for the alerts?
Well, to handle the way we, the way we would want to use it is a question. I don't know how robust what they have is and how robust they're willing to work with us on it.
You mean to segment the population so that not everybody is getting the message?
Yes, or to be able to, yeah. And to be able to tell people about what roads are closed in reasonable ways. There's a lot of kind of elements of communication.
You should have, we should have the police and fire chief in because our meeting with the rec...
And as John said, this is not the time to do it.
Yeah.
But I can tell you, if I'm on the RACC and I'm getting what everybody else gets, it's good, but it's, all I get is when there's window of weather advisories. And when you start getting those things, you get a whole bunch of them, and you start ignoring them because they cover the entire east coast of Massachusetts or whatever.
I think that's a good question.
It's all good, but it's, this is an area, separate from the website, that work, that... Okay.
Yeah.
How hardwired is this once we do what we're doing? This is a big deal, though. We've got to hardwire to something. But are each of these names hardwired? No, it's a slot that's hardwired.
It is a platform that is built by Civic Plus, and for front-page changes, they do them. So they're hardwired to the extent that they're not fluid. But if we wanted to change something, if it wasn't working, we would go to Civic Plus and have them change it.
Hardwired, we go to them, is a way, that's one thought. Some hardwiring is harder to do than others. Moving the columns around and et cetera, et cetera, is harder to do than I suspect it is for them to change the spelling of a word in one of these things. Okay.
Yes.
But we still go to them. But for that, they say, oh, tomorrow it will be done. And the other one, you say, well, you know, you really have to figure out. Then, okay.
Yeah, they've been great. Anything else behind the front page, we can update ourselves. Yeah. Yeah, so this is our first step, and then this is our second, and then we'll continue building on it.
Can I, you know, want to clarify just one quick thing? For developing this page, that is Civic Plus as well. Because they're going to be developing the links and making sure the links are working.
Making sure the links all work and everything.
Right.
I just want to say, I think this represents a substantial improvement. We'll obviously be kind of taking a look and so on. I really like the sort of Services, Documents, News. And a feature that I like, which I think is great, Robyn crowding everything in, I love the View All. So if you don't see it, it was two weeks ago. We've had a busy week. You can go see whatever's there. At some point, old, old stuff's going to have to come off.
It does. I mean, I monitor the news constantly, so it's not stale.
But I think that's important. And I appreciate the fact that it allows you to put things in top order where people will see them. Something might happen, and trash stickers and Gil's Grocers might fall off the list, and truly, status goes...
Yep, we can prioritize items, yes.
Yeah, good, okay. So even though Civic Plus does the front page, you have control over the specific news items? That's just a list? Yeah, I got you. Excellent, thank you.
Thanks. So we'll just keep on keeping on, and it could be periodic updates.
So you're going into each of these sections of the website to do similar changes, evaluate it, make...
Yeah, starting with Government because that seemed to be the most relevant. But yes, you know, if we have schools, we'll work with them on that. But really, what I felt was most compelling is the Government part of it.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so thank you very much, thank you. And Robyn, thank you for your support. God, you guys have been working together and...
That's great.
And three, you've been two, good.
We brought Beth into the process as well.
Excellent. And I appreciate the fact, taking a critical look at it, Excellent, and I, I appreciate the fact, taking critical look at it, and I think you are suggesting some very worthwhile updates and improvements, so. That said, if there's nothing further, I'd like to move on to the IT security. And I just checked my list, I put in a note to Quantalytics, just saying, do you have an update? And by the way, we want it broken down, so it's as à la carte as you can make it.
Right.
In terms of assessment, changes they could do, some cases, they go in and process of the assessment, they could, with our permission and advance, of course, make a change, and there's basically no additional cost. But they'll break all that out for us. Haven't heard it yet, so I will be giving Richard Avery another call on that, so I don't have anything further. The only other thing I can say is, Rob, do you still have the link to that article that you got out of the New York Times?
I just sent it on to you, I don't know if I kept it.
I'll have to see if I can find it. I'd like to send that out to all of the selectmen, because I think it was informative, short read, but.
Yeah.
Basically talks about how things are getting worse by the day.
How much it's costing people.
And the cost and so on, so, but I don't think any of us are heads in the sand about, I think we know that security is an important thing. This puts a little bit of background behind it, and as we talk with other people, I found that it helps to provide some illustration and so on, so.
If you can't find it, let me know, I'll put it in my files.
So, just making a note to myself. Okay, good, so from there, we're on to item five, FY 20, 20 goals and objectives. The object today is to go through, see whether we can work on a draft list based upon a number of inputs, and I suspect there may be some additional ones while we're here, just as sort of preliminary to this. First of all, I think the value of having town goals has been demonstrated to us. It provided a certain amount of focus this past year, which I think we in the town have benefited from. And it continues to enforce the, not enforces the word, continues to promote the idea that the selectmen are not just managers, but we are in fact leaders, and as such, have an obligation to not only listen to our constituents, but to take good ideas from all sources and seek to implement those that are deemed worthwhile. So that's what these town goals are. But also just make the point that they're town goals. The town administrator and individuals, select people, and other folks like you, Donna, and others, will have responsibilities within these that will affect one's own goal list, if you will. But they are specifically goals for the benefit of the town, and rather than specific individuals. So that's the editorial preamble. What we have are three documents available to us. One is a collection, Debbie assembled this, did she?
Yes.
And you?
She did.
She did. So this one here, labeled Town Goals and Objectives for 2020, lists 12 potential goals and five other areas that we pay attention to, but don't necessarily have specific goals connected with them.
So Debbie kind of drew these from different sources, including last year's goals, Robin, your suggestions of goals, is that what happened? Debbie did that?
Did you not have a meeting that you talked a little bit about?
We talked a little bit about it.
We have talked some on goals.
I think she made a.
I think she made it from that and other inputs that had come from your ears.
Okay, good.
This is, this is not a shopping list, we can or necessarily should buy everything on, but it is designed to be between these documents, inclusive of all the written information we've received so far. Dick, you may have some other things that haven't received from you. This second one here, Lynn, you put together?
Yes, those were the notes.
Can you give a summary on, this is the one that starts at the top, says Tier One Current Activities, labeled July 18th, 2019.
Yeah, that was a discussion with Mark, myself, and Kelly, trying to prioritize for the purposes of turning things over to Robin, where she should be focusing first, second, and third.
Okay, so that may.
Tier One Activities, right, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that may have some, some elements there. I had put together a list of suggestions. I somehow thought that everyone had been encouraged to send something in, maybe the only one, but these are probably not a surprise to me, there are just a couple of differences, other ideas that I have on this, but otherwise they're largely the same. What I would like to do is see whether, using this whiteboard here as kind of a central focal point, if we can identify basically those that we're kind of think we're all in agreement on without any questioning. We're going to make our list, maybe triage it into two or three levels of priority. We will talk about this in open meeting on Monday, we will not vote on it until Boyd is with us, and we will vote on it when we are in the public session that's being broadcast by Fox for Cable. So today is to see whether we can start to come to some sort of structure of what we would like to have on there.
One of the things that typically happens when you do these calls, I don't know the extent to which you may have done in the past, and any of the other towns, we did it sometime, I remember using the library and that, really do some brainstorming. You allow some crazy ideas to kind of fall out of your thought that represents, oh, but that really fits this one. So you get a bunch of ideas out there, and then you whittle away at them and throw away lots of them. But sometimes it just creates a new thought or brings out an idea of something that needs to be done. It lends itself to a real free form. I can remember various times, spoke to some MMA types of sessions, and it would come up from time to time. But I can see that we're not so much into it now, but I think it was Steve Fellini suggested even that sometimes you go away someplace to just really kind of brainstorm.
Take a retreat or something.
Get things going.
I think, I think in some cases, you're right, that you would do that if you want sort of broader goals. I look at this as sort of a work plan for the board, but you're, you know, there may be things you want to, if, for example, you say, citizen engagement is a goal, well, the town website might fit under that, or, but this I see as not necessarily goals, but a work plan.
Oh, yes.
From my point of view, I see it as like.
The one that, do you want to get out with Kelly and, and Mark? I agree with you, it is more of a work plan, it's very valuable.
Yeah, it had nothing to do with goals, it had to do, pull together all the open issues and items.
That's right.
And focus on which ones we wanted Robin to focus on, so that we're passing on the information.
But I do think we need to go through this, because there are a lot of things that are imminent, and I want us to be clear on that, so in the time I'm here.
Yeah.
We get through them and set the stage for your new town administration. And that person can work with you in setting goals, say, for the budgets that are coming around, because a lot of times, goals require money.
Yep.
And.
So I guess part of what I want to do is, take, by all means, it is not to restrict ideas, if something comes up and so on, I think you should feel totally free to put it out there. My inclination is to take, and I can remember the guy who did this, but make to create two lists. One is urgent and the other is important, and see if there's anything that we, at least the three of us, four of us, agree belong on one or the other list for good reasons. And Boyd will get a chance to look at it and counter a few wishes, but I was thinking that might be a place to start, because if there are things we're going to have to do, or we lose opportunities of great significance, we wouldn't want to let that slip by. Does that make sense?
But you can, you can also back into what the goals are, which is if citizen engagement or citizen fairness is a goal, we could say that, you know, working on the website is improving, is a step towards that. If, to developing.
Let me just follow up on that, that's a good one, Robin. On the website, website was, was a goal, it's not done yet, a lot of things have happened to it. My sense is that there's a certain point at which you take it off as a primary goal. A lot of things got in place, people got assigned, ideas got established. You can keep it on a goal and keep it running, 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 but that stuff, that's, okay, we're going to review what happened to it, but.
It'll shift down here and over, a bigger part of the.
It's an operational.
Exactly.
Item versus on a.
Exactly.
I agree. It was a needed goal because we got complaints, there was a need to clean it up, whatever else, and they've done a great job of bringing it along, but I don't know that we want to, I'm just saying it as an example.
I understand.
I'm not sure we want to put website back down as a goal, I think we do, but maybe not.
But maybe what you put on that is under important, ongoing updates to the website, for example. That's important, but we, we've kind of put it up there, and now we're moving into, well, we're going to the next step, and to the next step, and to the next step. That, that, that effort has sort of been launched, and we have a good idea what we're doing, and everybody understands those parts.
Yeah.
So it's probably, as you're right, we're into the operational phase, but we don't want to drop it.
Oh, we're not going to drop it, no.
Yeah, that's a good distinction, between the strategic and the operational. Yes, we do want to keep your eye on the ball, you do want to get those updates, but it's not something we as a group would sit around discussing or work on.
No, I think, I think, what I hear is we effectively said, go forth with it, and that's what we'll do.
And it is underway, it will continue to be.
Are you thinking of taking the items that are on one of these lists and putting them in one of the other categories, is that?
Well, some of them for sure, for instance, I'll give you one that I think is on the urgent, and I think that's the internet security.
Okay.
And it's not the biggest thing. One thing I put on the important would be downtime revitalization, which will be an ongoing effort. It never looks the same year to year, which is good, we keep getting further and further along. But I think this list needs, whichever it ends up being, needs to tell the citizens where our attention collectively is going.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I like the strategic, operational shift, only because like when you look at the downtime revitalization, there's some very big strategic issues to discuss in how you move forward with that.
That one is still on goals, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes, because that one, there are a lot of decisions at a very high level.
But we have, we scratched the surface on that one, it's not, it's not into.
The downtime revitalization is definitely a goal, so whether urgent or important, I kind of see this as strategic, it's, it's one of the.
To me, it's not a website, as I suggested.
It's not a website.
Not a website, this is a goal that continues.
Yes, and it's still very high level with a lot of impactful decisions to be made.
And what we are with, right.
And of course, something at that level would require more selectmen engagement in terms of policy and bringing community together. Because you have a lot of moving parts there.
So if I could ask this, before we finish this topic.
Sure.
We can do this. I have a number of items that I'd like to just kind of read through, not spend any amount of time talking. Enough to explain if somebody has a question about what do you mean by that, but just ideas, just to throw out some ideas.
Do you want to get the huff of the board?
No, 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 I don't want to stop the process, but I'm asking for enough time to, to take that, five or 10 minutes, to go through a list of some things that I have, just for, for somebody else's ideas of goals that they've been thinking about.
Absolutely, which I think is what you were describing for, John, right? To have the ideas and have them go out there and kind of debate them, and then.
No, I, I, I ended up telling mine out, yours and I down to share, let's put yours out here too, so.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
They're here, absolutely.
Okay.
So go, you're, you're on.
Oh, I don't want to take, anyway to stop what you were doing here.
No, 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 I, I think it's important that we get your ideas out, because they may relate to other things, and I think it's important.
Here's the way I title this, Goals FY 2020- Discussion.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see them as quote goals, I see them as items that we may want to discuss, or may want to bring up to the level of.
Does this make sense to email to someone here, print out and get a large copy?
That would probably be helpful.
I'd kind of like to have it as you have written it there directly.
Okay, while I'm talking, or do you?
No, 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 let's just.
Yeah, I'll get it, it's.
Take a minute out, is it expensive?
Will recess or two minutes to get a copy?
It's ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Ten sentences.
So recess.
But is that, is that good? Donna, if we, do you know that, to ask, would you be able to just get us some copies? And that way, we can make notes around what you said, to kind of.
Do you read that top slash MA dot com?
How you do things when you want to do things, okay.
So email to Donna, attach that.
Just attach.
No, I just think it's, the other thing too is by having a physical piece of paper, frankly, it kind of puts it at the same level of, kind of weight is this? I don't want to misinterpret, maybe.
This stuff smells really fast.
Do you think you can see the bottom?
Yeah.
Okay, either my eyes just won't walk you, or my screen shrunk down to like a .7 font. That was very odd.
These things are used to that.
I know. Maybe I'll go out and come back in.
Can I skate?
I'm going to see if I go back.
You should have.
No, the whole thing. I must have hit something.
That looks great, but.
Yeah.
So, will you start over mine anyway?
Um, I'd like to wait until Donna's back here, we can take.
Do you want to continue on this list then, just any discussion?
I want to until Donna's here.
No, it still came back up tiny.
There is a, that happens on mine sometimes too, and it's a simple thing that doesn't happen often enough that I bother to remember. So as you can see, I was, how do you get a nonprofit started, doing my research before.
Yeah, it's interesting that you have to actually hold your first meeting before you can apply for 501 status.
Isn't that interesting?
Is this for what?
Creating a nonprofit, a 501 secret. Yeah, so you have to file your EIN, and you have to do your articles in corporation, you have to, of course, get your board members and elect your offices.
Oh, yes, so you have those to submit as the entry for.
But yes, so you have to have your meeting in order to elect your offices.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, yeah.
But I just didn't want to complete the meeting, I sneaked up on it.
Oh, see, there you go.
You could have done this, you sent it to everybody, and you could have had it on your screen. That's what we're supposed to do in today's day and age.
This is so much more fun.
We'll head there.
Sir, I can't, I dropped them all.
Actually, I love this though, because I can write notes.
Yes, no, I appreciate this too.
Believe me, they're, they're correct.
I always thought that was if we two were getting the board docs, that we could write our notes on here.
Yes, 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 yeah.
Do you have it?
By the way, I have a novel that I also sent to Donna just now, which were the things that I have as suggested goals. So this one is discussion, I mean, this is, this is, well, I'm talking about the brainstorming kinds of things.
Yeah.
All right, and always stop me if, if what I say is not clear. Improve ways to communicate with residents concerning emergencies and events. Town meeting, traffic schedule, storm damage, shelter in place, hurricane, whatever. Not too different from the stuff that we were just somewhat talking about when we talked about the RECC, but getting that sort of thing moving. Update, improve the five-year financial forecast and long-term plan. The improve means, the improve is referring to the number of parameters that we have in that plan. In other words, you can have a five-year plan that has three variables, or you can have a five-year plan that has 500 variables. Now, variables are a good start, but they're just the beginning. The improve is talking about refining some of it, so we can do a better job of forecasting with more variables. Establish a strategy for integration of municipal data and applications to prove the effectiveness and efficiency of an operation. We've talked about data a number of times in the past, I don't think we have a plan yet. This, this is suggesting this getting together and figuring out where, where we want our data, what we want. Hire a town administrator, hire a police chief, implement financial transparency, a financial transparency application. For example, ClearGov, Munis, whatever, that is accessible via the town website. In other words, people go in and find quote documents, actually find, in this case, literally data about financial status. Seven, implement one Munis CCS, which is their function referred to as a customer self-serve application. And they have three of them, one is for employee, and others for citizen, and the third one is for vendor. One is for employee and others for citizen, and the third one is for vendor. Address, and I think you had this in one of your plans too already, for example. Address Massachusetts law requiring municipalities to comply with OSHA regulations.
Nine. Could you talk more about eight? We said address Massachusetts law, what do you mean by that?
So there's a new statute that says municipal government must function under OSHA rules.
Okay.
OSHA's not in control, as it is for, because OSHA didn't control governments. But the state has said, you know, we should be taking care of our employees. So the legislators did a statute that said, your workers are under the rules of OSHA.
Gotcha.
In other words, if we're doing any construction, and you go out there and you see them, they better have a heart at the glass, and all that sort of thing. And, and so the state has a group that is looking at it and will provide some guidance and that. But it's a whole, it's a safety thing, it's a whole safety kind of thing.
And we don't do it now?
We may, but we had no focus on the OSHA, nor have we, one of the things you can do is, I'm not suggesting how we do this, but one of the things that we could do is have the state come in and they will do a review of the town. Eh, maybe we don't want that. Maybe it's more important to have a review of the water department, because they have the most industrial, whatever. Or.
I like to.
Fire, whatever, yeah. By the way, there's a big deal that going, when they try to do this with fire, saying, you know, you're not allowed to go up a ladder without a, how do you do that when you're fighting a fire? So there's a bunch of questions that occur about OSHA. But the state is in there, wanting to help us first by doing a review, and they're not going to ding us or anything, and then, I don't know. I got a lot of this at MMA, yeah.
I got the idea.
A little magnitude, there's something there, but it is.
I didn't realize we had new regulations to comply with, but now I understand that makes sense.
But importantly, we're not under OSHA though, governments are still not under OSHA.
So governments are not required to be under OSHA?
Right.
Okay, so this is how.
Because we have to comply with the regulations. There's a place called Department of Industrial Accidents that reviews accidents if they happen.
Okay, so Dick, are you saying though, municipalities do not need to abide by the OSHA regulations?
Two things. One is, if you, if you're a business, construction's the best one typically, or you're a manufacturer, whatever. You are under OSHA, and you better know what those OSHA guidelines are, and you better make sure that your employees are functioning under OSHA. If they're riveting something, then there's some rules about riveting, whatever the case may be. You got to work less, you got to do this, you have to sound, whatever it is. You, you as an employer are responsible for ensuring that all of your workers are functioning under OSHA. That has not been the case for the government employees, and we didn't have that requirement.
Like highway.
And still do not.
Highway workers, snowplow operators, folks like that?
I don't know all the details. If you, if you are a contractor, you are, okay? But it's a little, in my mind, it's a little bit like the government when they originally did social security. Everybody has to have social security except government, you know what I mean? So.
Love to investigate that, is what it is.
What's happened in the last year is that the state did a statute that said, all of you that are municipal employees, when you're working, need to have, work under the same rules as OSHA.
Okay, so now we are under those rules, you're saying?
Well, based on the state saying, if we don't do it, the feds are not finding us. I mean, the feds, when they come in on OSHA, on a company, put them out of business.
So I think it might investigate how.
I think investigate is what we say. Okay, good, that's, I understand, that's for a good start.
But there are people in, in the state who are, are in this program. When they added the statute, they created the department, and they do this sort of thing and whatever else. Okay, nine, do the, complete the.
Those are collective bargaining agreements.
Collective bargaining agreements, by June 30th. Because they're not, essentially all of them accept reserve police officers, I think.
That was the only one that is outstanding, right?
That doesn't have to do it.
I have to finish up some negotiations with the water department, I haven't gotten to them yet.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fixing things up, but I'm just saying that the ones that roll off in nine months now, or 10 months, I'm just listing those and saying, let's get them done.
Those all end.
Again, these are not necessarily goals, these are just things.
No, no, I hear you, but, so those are going to be all ending, the end of the contracts are on June 30th, 2020. Okay.
Yeah, right.
And that's in my list of things to transmit to the board and to the new town administrator.
Thank you, okay, good.
Control operating costs. And the last one is controlled operating costs. Reduce operating costs by examining personnel costs, legal costs, town hall, public safety operations for potential efficiencies and savings. And some of the work that you did with the IT was to look for applications that would, and you know, one, set a goal of some sort, it might be to the point of identifying, implement an application that reduces by eight person hours a week of tasks in the town hall. And sometimes those things provides a tremendous focus on, we're trying to do this, how can we do it? All that sort of thing. So that's all the magnitude, that's, thank you for listening.
I would say you should add highway and parks and cemeteries into there.
Yeah, I certainly would.
Because those are, highway is a big department, public safety and highway.
Under controlled operating costs?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I, I, I just meant, oh, I, yeah.
All departments, all departments.
Yeah, it was just examples. Oh, I'm sorry, I said.
No, I'm just saying, you know, I just know that highway and parks and cemeteries probably because they have a lot of heavy equipment.
And it's also not, we'd be careful that we don't just look at the town as town hall and its employees, it goes beyond that, so a broader view, but I think the idea is great, that's fine.
Okay, thank you for listening.
Yeah, absolutely. So what I'm trying to do is pocket a list of candidates and have some discussion along the way. As I look at the town goals and objectives for 2020, one of the things that I see was left out of this switch, I'm sorry, is in here, that it's always a goal, and I guess because it's, to me, in the management side more than the leadership and new direction side, the town budget, that's probably the single most important thing we do while we're here long, somehow putting that as a goal, it's always going to be there, and we could never do, we couldn't run the town, we didn't do this, I kind of want to take it off that.
It's not a goal, unless, unless there's this thing that says, a goal of town budget is to make it, no increase in spending or something like that, but to do the.
Your last item, Dick.
I absolutely agree with you.
Yep, and this to me would be a special effort.
It's a special effort, right.
It's, it's, I think in frank, frankly, would best be done outside the normal budgeting process.
It should be an ongoing effort, actually.
It should be an ongoing effort.
What you do is, you know, you put that under budget, ongoing.
Yep, so, yeah, but I agree on that, and the, so one of the ones that I had for urgent, urgent meaning you just don't have time to play around with it, you're going to have to do it. I noticed, I think Dick, at one point, you had hire a TA.